And then Jeff with his audio.
I guess so.
They told me tomorrow. Is your answer for depression? No, there isn't. No, there is not. No.
The meal was coming back to him.
No.
I did not vote for that.
Let's go ahead and call the meeting in order, please. This is the City of Canton Council Meeting. And this is July 25th, 2019. If you would, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we bow. Father, we thank you for this day, for all that are gathered here, for all of our citizens here in the city. We ask that you be with our public servants and just guard them as they go throughout dangerous operations each day. We ask that you be with our council and help us make the best decisions. All these things we pray, in your name. Amen.
Amen. See. Okay. You have your agenda in front of you, and if there are any changes, additions, or anything? Mr. Peppers?
I'd like to request an executive session for litigation personnel and real estate.
All of, all the above.
We're right.
Executive session. Personnel. Real estate. Okay, are there any other additions or changes? Okay, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Mr. Young made the motion. I believe Mr. Goodman seconded that motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All members voting for the motion. Okay, our first item of business before we get into our normal council meeting is a public hearing on our fiscal year 2020 proposed budget, which also includes the setting of the millage rate at 5.40. Mr. Peppers is going to handle that, and then we'll open it up for any public comments.
Yes, sir. Good evening. The City of Canton is prepared to move forward with the adoption of the property tax millage rate and begin the process of adopting our fiscal year 2020 operating budget. In accordance with the charter, we've provided those documents to you. We've posted them on the city's website. As you're aware, we are requesting that the millage rate be held steady at 5.4 mills. As such, we're required, under the state of Georgia, to have three public hearings. We held two of those on July the 11th, and tonight is the third of those public hearings. The millage rate is calculated by taking the fair market value of a property and multiplying it by a 40% discount, which creates the taxable value. That taxable value is then multiplied by the millage rate to show the taxes due to the city. So for example, if Mr. James Smith has a home of 200,000 in fair market value, multiplied by the discounted rate of 40%, he has an $80,000 taxable value. That multiplied by the millage rate equates to $432 in taxes due to the city. As I've stated, this is the third of our three public hearings. Our millage rate currently at 5.4 mills is, continues to be, the lowest rate we've had. We've had it now suggested, if it's approved tonight, this will be the third year in a row at 5.4 mills, which is still the lowest tax rate the city's had in 26 years. It's still the lowest combined tax rate of any city in the county, because ours also includes the 3.269 mills for fire services. So that, that is included in our M and O millage rate. Our budget this year does include four additional personnel. Those personnel, I'm sorry, five additional personnel. Those personnel include three employees in the police department, a probation officer, and also a full-time custodian. If you have any other questions, I'll be happy to go over it or answering questions that might come up during the public hearing.
Okay, I would suggest we go ahead and open this up for any comments from the public, and then, once we have done that, we'll open it up to the council for any questions that they may have. All right, we, if you, if you wanted to speak concerning the budget, you should fill out, signed up a sheet, because you have to have, I believe, fill out an affidavit, maybe a contribution. You don't do that on this one? Okay, just planning and zoning does that. Okay. Okay, so, Thomas Weaver.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Thomas Weaver. I reside at 131 Old Marietta, and in the interest of brevity, I'll be sitting very brief, and I'll keep my comments to be concise with the remarks that I have submitted to you on first and second occasion during the first and second public hearings that Mr. Peppers has already alluded to. I too appreciate the great work that the city's administration and staff has put into the budget, and I would like to submit comment publicly that I support the adoption of the 5.4 millage rate as advertised in the county's legal organ, and I know that this city continues to be good stewards of the public funds that the taxpayers have entrusted to you. Thank you. However, I would like to reiterate again, for the benefit of the full council, that based on the previous comments that have been made, I am desirous to indeed ask that council move forward in securing the discretionary funds necessary to both purchase and install the storage lockers there, and I have worked diligently with the city's administration, the city's mayor, the council, and also the municipal court judge in that endeavor. So it is my hope that in bypassing the budget, that the amendments will reflect that the funds were indeed made available for that purpose. Thank you. As to the second matter that I had alluded to in my first and second remarks, when we first held the hearings, excuse me, I had made some comments about the library, but I do believe that representatives from the library are here this evening, and therefore I choose to refrain from submitting any further comment on that in the interest of allowing those speakers to present their remarks. I think that would be more appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Appreciate it. Anyone else? That's the only one we had signed up for this, so, okay, if...
You can still sign up.
What? Sure, you can speak, yeah. Anyone, any member of the public that has a comment can do that.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name is Dwight Pullen. I live at 5071 Rebels Run. I too would like to commend the council and the mayor on an excellent job of being good stewards of our money. If we look back several years ago, this city was in a terrible shape as far as debt's concerned, and this council should be commended for the debt, or for improving the debt liability of our city. One of the things that I would like to ask, and it's more just clarification, so that I can understand what's going on, it may need to be an item for discussion, or it may not. A few weeks ago, I was at a city council meeting, and it was mentioned that $500,000 would be transferred from the fire, I mean, excuse me, from the water and sewer fund to balance the general fund budget. Now, it's my understanding that a million dollars was transferred last year, or maybe more, to balance the general fund budget from water and sewer. I understand that some of our most critical needs is develop a new water plant and a new sewer plant, at a cost of about $40 million apiece. So I guess I'm concerned that we're balancing our general fund budget on the backs of our water and sewer, and we're going to be in a deficit with that in the near future. I wonder if we've used other funds to balance the general fund budget in the past, and if we have, my question is, why can't we balance the general fund budget at a general fund expense, uh, general fund revenue, as opposed to transferring from other funds? And I want to get a clarification on our millage rate. We're at 5.4 mills, or that's the proposed rate, and I understand that Woodstock is at, I believe, 6.57. Now, this may be just a point of clarification, but do our residents not have to pay 3.2 mills to the county for fire protection on top of our 5.4 mills? And if so, that really equates our millage rate, including fire, to be, you know, something like 8.6, as compared to Woodstock, which provides its own fire service at 6.57. These are just items for discussion. There may not be answers to those questions. I will leave it to the council as to how you want to proceed with this information that I've presented, but I am concerned that we're not balancing our general fund budget each year, that we're bringing it in from other sources to balance that budget. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else that would like to, to speak regarding the proposed FY20 budget? If not, we will close the public portion of that, the public hearing, and we'll open this up for the, any council discussion that you may have. In fact, Mr. Peppers may be able to answer some questions there in his discussion.
Sure. I'll take the second, the second point Mr. Pullen had first. So our 5.4 millage rate includes what we pay to the county for fire services, so we don't charge, our citizens aren't charged more for that fire district. If you lived in the city of Ball Ground or the city of Waleska, for instance, on your tax bill, you would get their city millage rate, and you'd also see that 3.29 in fire district. On our tax bills, you see 5.4 mills, and that includes fire services, so...
And our community system, a great millage rate for our services.
Yes, sir. So, so that's, that's the answer to that question. On the transfer from the water fund, a couple of items there, a couple of thoughts there, at least from, from my perspective. One is that we do provide fire services out of our general fund millage rate. Well, part of that fire services is having an adequate water system, which also provides for hydrants and maintenance of areas that are throughout the city. So for instance, we maintain our own rights of way. Well, lots of those rights of way are where our water and sewer lines are located. So, in my personal opinion, part of the reason why we are looking at that transfer is to offset costs which would come from the general fund to maintain areas where we do have water and sewer, and where we're also paying out the general fund for fire services to also reimburse ourselves some costs, as it associates with keeping water out in the district even beyond the city limits to provide for adequate fire protection through the county. We did use 1.25 million last year of the water fund, because in years past, we had utilized fund balance reserve to be able to cover any increases in taxes and actually roll back the rate. Last year was the first year where we were in a situation, if we had continued to just use fund balance as that opportunity to cover, we would have started going into a, into a reduced fund balance, which could put us in a situation in the future. You know, ultimately, we don't have to use fund balance, and we don't have to use the water and sewer fund, but if we chose to do that, the millage rate we would be requesting to balance the budget this year would be 6.8 mills instead of 5.4 mills. So, I mean, ultimately, that's a decision of council, as to whether or not they would prefer to do it, you know, purely through millage rate, or if they want to make any cuts or changes to the budget, of course, we can do. We try to do is provide you with a budget that meets the needs that you've put forward, at least in projects and ideas that you want us to cover. It meets the needs of our staff. It meets increased costs that we see across the board on electricity and gas and things like that, and to do that, we did it with a balance of both general fund balance and with appropriation from the water and sewer fund.
Anyone else? Comments?
Just, just a comment. On the water and sewer fund, I, I tend to think of it as, as really operating expenses, and then there's just a capital outlay. I mean, there's kind of really two major distinct buckets that we really probably also have to keep in context of how we think about the water and sewer fund, and so, so I know we've had a lot of discussion in, in past council meetings or discussions about the budget, and that's always been a concern, but, but I believe this is our number one revenue generator for the city, correct?
It is.
So it's, in your opinion, has it become more of a, you know, kind of a balance of today to how best utilize those funds coming in? Because certainly, I don't know if we'd ever be able to use those for a major capital investment in the future, correct?
I mean, ultimately, I, you know, I think our goal would be that we don't have to utilize fund balance, and we don't have to utilize another fund to balance budget, but, you know, I don't know that there's an appetite to raise the millage rate to 6.8 mills to be able to support that. But I will say this, you know, if you think about the water and sewer as a utility, because it's an enterprise fund, all of our other utilities are paying franchise fees to the city to operate in the city, because there is certain things that we provide, which includes our right of way for the operation of those utilities. Georgia Power pays a right of way to the city, a franchise fee to the city. Comcast pays a franchise fee to the city. Windstream pays a franchise fee to the city. If our water and sewer were a private entity, it would likely pay a franchise fee to the city. You know, when we were going through the process of the rate study, that was one of the questions that was asked, was, you know, is it, is it common for local governments that control their own utility to transfer, you know? Yes, it is on certain things, you know, operations being one of those. There are several years, at least in the city, where we did not charge the utility rent in our buildings. We paid for the, the office space that they were in out of the general fund. Is that something we want to do forever? No. I would, you know, I would propose that we find a way to fix it long-term. I do think that we're, we're showing ourselves more financially prudent this year by not utilizing 1.25 billion from water fund transfers, but doing 500,000. And again, there are two or three items in the budget that are listed as contingencies, and so, as we go through the fiscal year, if we're not utilizing those contingencies, we may not have to make a transfer from the water and sewer fund. You know, if, if we don't need those additional dollars for certain projects, we can leave the money in the water and sewer fund and not use it. Or if we see that revenues are coming in stronger throughout the year, we can always do a budget amendment to remove the water fund and, and place those in from additional received revenues. Ultimately, we're in a different position than, say, the federal government. We have to provide a balanced budget by law, and so that's what we've tried to do before you, but that doesn't mean as the year goes on, we can't do budget amendment to reflect either increases in revenue or reductions in expenditures.
Anyone else? Mr. Grue.
To touch on Mr. Weaver's question about the storage locker, will we need to make a special line item for that, or will we be able to pull those funds out of the general fund?
No, it would, it would be covered under supplies or minor equipment.
At a ballpark, how much that might be?
Don't know yet, and part of the reason why we don't know, we have started looking at the facility over there at varied locations where something could be placed. You know, what we do have to look at is, you know, number of units we might need, that's something we haven't considered. We also have to be aware that in that particular building, the entrance into municipal court, we have to make sure we meet ADA compliance, and so, you know, I don't have an estimate on the cost of that yet, because we're really not sure what the unit's going to look like.
And to Mr. Pullen's concerns about the future cost of the wastewater and the water treatment plant being built, are the improvements we need to make and the upgrades, we had a very good presentation at last meeting from the gentleman water study, and he explained to us about how our rates are just a tad low, and that we need to raise them a bit, and that this will pay for itself, and I know you can explain that with much more ease than I can.
Sure. So, in the rate study that was done, it accounted for certain projects in the water and sewer fund, the biggest of those projects being an increase in wastewater plant by an expansion. And basically, what, what the study provided is that the city will need about a 2.5% rate increase on water and sewer each year, you know, over the next five years to be able to carry that debt. One thing that we have to remember is that the majority, all of the debt that the city has left is pretty much in the water and wastewater fund, and most of that debt will be paid off in 2027, 28, 29. So as we go through the period of constructing the wastewater plant, we will have some debt that overlaps with existing debt, but as that debt falls off, as we're ready to start the water treatment plant, we'll have some of that extra room from prior years, debt that has fallen off to be able to accommodate that. So unlike needing a 10 or 20% increase as we're adding, adding capacity, that slow and steady increase over time, which is basically what you bring in when you do a cost of, of consumer price index adjustment, should cover the debt service on the water and wastewater plants.
Thank you.
That, that rate study, it did not consider taking money from the water and sewer and putting it in the general fund, though, right? It didn't, it, the, the study they did didn't say you can take X amount out every year and put it in the general fund in order to meet that specific rate that they had indicated.
That rate study was based off of revenues moving forward, and so, no, it didn't show any direct swapover of funds.
Yeah.
But it also, but it also looked in prior years and saw where we had done that. So there's a little bit of logic in there as to how that worked.
Anyone else? Ms. Wilson?
I just want to reiterate one pretty simplistic fact. My, our property was evaluated by the county, and it went up this year from what it was last year, which means that our property taxes will be slightly higher, not because the millage rate from the city of Canton changed, it's simply because our, the tax evaluation changed, and that was done by the county.
So the overall growth in our tax digest as a city, about half of that growth is from new construction or new properties coming online, and the other half is from new evaluation of existing properties.
And what else? Mr. Grant.
Also wanted to confirm, and I know I brought this up at the last hearing, and I know the, the library system's going to make a presentation, but it's on the agenda after proposed action on, on the budget and the millage rate, and I know we got a head nod last, at the last meeting. And Mr. Peppers, could you just confirm that the money that had previously in the budget for the library fund, had been allocated for that, is in the budget in other places, and that we, can we re, just reaffirm, we are committed to that going forward, and...
So la, last year, the city moved the library payment from general fund to rental car tax. It's one of the seven items that the rental car tax in the state of Georgia can be allocated towards. Currently, we have funds in reserve in rental car tax, and so it doesn't show up in the budget that you have before you. It's not shown as a line item, but at any time, council can decide that they want to transfer those funds from contingency or reserve into a line item to the library at, at an amount that you want to set.
So the firm, the funds are there, and it is allowable usage of the rental car tax money?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I think it's based on how we come out with the service delivery strategy, right?
It's one of the topics that's been identified for discussion as part of service delivery, and that's one of the reasons why staff did not put it in the budget at the time. Understanding, though, that we do have funds in the rental car tax, and if you wanted to come back in October, or November, or January, or what have you, you could come back anytime during the year and allocate it to the library.
I would like to request, as soon as we have resolution on the service delivery strategy, that we review that, and if we need to make a line item, that we do that, or we, we do make a budget amendment to, to cover that.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, the only, the only thing I would like to say is that I think staff's done a tremendous job in working on this budget. I guess my, I have a couple of concerns, but the one principal concern I have is not just this year's budget, but how it relates to previous years as well. Over the last five years, our general fund budget has increased by more than 42%. That's pretty heavy, actually, it seems like to me, and I think we need to be a little more conservative in our, maybe in our spending, and be a little more careful, and, and just because we keep our millages the same or get an increase in revenue, doesn't mean you have to spend it. I mean, you know, you can, you can still move forward, I think, without spending everything that comes in. So, anyway, thank you for the job you did and have done on this issue. I think it's very admirable that, because it's, it's a big job, there's no doubt, and I know you've been working on it for months, so I think it's a good, fair budget at this point now. Yes?
Mr. Mayor, I think that's a, a good point on the 42% increase. Mr. Pepper, or Mr. Ingham, could you explain or address that, of 42%, or is that to some primary cost centers, or...
Sure.
I assume, I know we've grown police department, and fire, I know there's a 500,000 increase for fire because of new development, but...
Well, so, for instance, if you go back to 2014, we were spending about 5.3 million collectively for police and fire. This year's budget reflects a little over 8 million, so, you know, we've had probably a $3 million a year increase tapering up to that over the last few years as we've beefed up public safety. One of those is by contract, so the cost of fire goes up, but that cost of fire goes up contingent with everybody around us. We're not proportionately paying more for fire service than somebody that lives in An Incorporated, or lives in Holly Springs, or Ball Ground, or Waleska. Where we do save is that, you know, for instance, when we did this, this round of SPOST, we didn't have to allocate any of those capital fund dollars to equipment for fire, we were able to put those into facilities, parks, trails, and, and infrastructure projects. But the three areas where we've seen the largest increase over the last five years, police, fire, and the building department. Part of, part of what I need to tell you about the building department is, you know, technically, we should be spending what we're bringing in. We've had a lot of construction projects going on, and so some of that cost is associated with having the staff in place to be able to review those projects over time. Additionally, if you'll recall, when we consolidated fire services, our fire budget used to carry commercial fire inspections, the, the annual inspections that we do on commercial buildings, that got shifted over to the building department. So even though that used to show up in the fire budget, now it shows up in the building department budget as a staffing situation. So those are primarily the three areas where we've had the growth over the last five years.
Anyone else? Okay. Do we have...
Motion to approve.
Okay. Mr. Grue made the motion. Mr. Young seconded that motion. Any other discussion, questions?
Clarification?
Yes.
Is that a motion to approve the budget and adopt the 5.4 millage rate, or is that, do we need two separate motions?
It is.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All members voting for the motion. Thank you. Okay. Now, we will move, move on. I'd like to welcome all of our guests and visitors here tonight, and especially, we have a number of representatives from the Sequoia Regional Library System, and I believe the Community Engagement Manager, John Rogers, is going to make a presentation. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, House. And my name is John Rogers. I'm the Community Engagement Manager, Sequoia Regional Library System. And part of our new strategic plan that we implemented at the beginning of this year is that we wanted to, in more of an effort, to reach out to the cities that are, make part of our system and just keep them more informed on everything that we're doing for our community and what we offer to the cities. And so we want to thank the council for giving us an opportunity now that where we can do that. And I know that y'all have a packed agenda today, so in the interest of time, I'll get started. But a little bit of background on me, I've, this is actually my 10th year with Sequoia Regional Library. Been, it's been a pleasure of mine to to be with them and see just how many lives that the library has changed and how many families they've helped over the years. Dive right in. So part of our new strategic plan that we implemented was to re-articulate our mission, vision, and values. A lot of people, when they think of libraries, they think of books. And while that is true, you'll notice that nowhere in this presentation do I mention books. Libraries are so much more. And so we've re-articulated our mission statement to be that we connect people with ideas and opportunities to explore, learn, and create. Our vision is that we want to be the community's dynamic destination for discovery. And we value open access, service excellence, community engagement, and continuous learning. And so that's something that we take pride in, and that's something that we put forth in all of its decisions that we make, the programming that we put on, and our catalog which we offer for our public. Now, our system in particular serves Cherokee County, Gilmer, and Pickens. We have free access to nearly 300,000 items, like books, magazines. But we also do movies, CDs, games, puzzles, eBooks, technology. And last year, we conducted over 2,400 free events in 2018 with programming for adults, teens, and children. And so what that means, and you'll see a little more of this when I go into what we did this summer for our summer reading program, but you're able to attend the library completely free of charge. You don't need a library card to show up. We put on weekly events such as early literacy storytimes for our families. We also do programs for adults like resume assistance and technology programs where they can help with get email set up. We also have a teen advisory board and we do, they put on programs for our teens that just kind of unite the teens in in our area and get them, they can help implement library programming. And so it helps just work back into each other. And it's all for free. And you may have seen some of our libraries. These two are just right down the road. We've got the RT Jones Branch, that's our headquarters. We also have the library, the Law Library. We've got our Ball Ground Branch and our Hickory Flat Branch, Ball Ground in Canton. We have two libraries in Woodstock, the Rose Creek and the Woodstock Public Library off Main Street. And then we have our Gilmer and Pickens branches as well. Now, I know the picture's kind of hard to see because of the, where the screens are, but this is our staff photo that we took at Staff Development Day this May. This is our SRLS family, so everybody's crammed into one little photo. And I know that they are especially thankful that, for the opportunity for me to come and show some of the work that they've done for their community and and the families that come into the library. So in addition to checking out books, which everyone knows you can do at the library, it's, it's also a place where you can learn new job and computer skills. You can help your kids do better in school. You can access online research databases. We have genealogy resources where you can explore your family tree. And you can also, the library's a big money saver. You can check out, in addition to all the money you save from renting books and movies and other items, you can also get free admission to attractions around the community, which I'll get more into in just a second. So I'm going to talk about real quick our services and programming. That photo is from one of our summer reading kickoff events. We did a lot of programming this summer just alone. And we welcomed hundreds of families into all of our libraries in all three counties for events like magic shows and petting zoos and virtual reality programs and just using our bunch of technology, everything at our disposal to put on a good show and get everyone excited about summer reading program. And also to help low-income families who need a place to go during the summer and wouldn't have access to some of these items otherwise. So some of the items that we offer, we offer assistive services for any patrons who are unable to read or handle standard materials due to disability. We check out, we send books by mail to homebound patrons. And we can also get patrons signed up for glass, which helps set them up with Braille and audio reading materials. So you, we're trying to eliminate barriers. You do not need to, if if you have a disability, that does not need to stop you from, from the library being there for you. We're there for everyone. Some of our e-library services, I won't get into all of these, but some of our most popular ones, we have access to mango languages. You can learn, you can choose courses between over 70 different languages to learn for free using your library card once you log in. We have online e-reading databases where you can download digital magazines and eBooks. We can, we have a resource that helps teens prepare for their driving exams. All of these provide, you know, answer, address a need that the community has. And this is all completely accessible, open to the public, and we provide that for them. Other services that we provide, we do, we help with career services. The RT Jones Branch down the street where I typically live, we have a monthly resume workshop where people can come in and get their resumes updated and, you know, help them with job hunting. We do exam proctoring for students in schools. We have Georgia rooms in many of our libraries that offer genealogy resources, old yearbooks, and old archives. We have our seed libraries at some of our branches where you can just, if you're into gardening, you can come and pick up seeds for free. It's like Take a Penny, Leave a Penny, except you don't have to leave a penny. Just come get seeds. And that's all available to you. And of course, we have basic services like public computers, free Wi-Fi, as well as printing, faxing, and laminating and scanning services. Some of what we offer for children is we help them with 1,000 books before kindergarten. As the name implies, it helps stu-, early readers get set up to read 1,000 books before they enter kindergarten. That picture in the center right there is of a cute graduation ceremony that we do every year. It's a lot of fun. Parents and grandparents really get into it, as do the children. We help children in school with their accelerated reader and Lexile levels. And we also have a homeschooling guide and resources for homeschool parents who teach their children at home. And we've been doing a real big early literacy push this year. Something that we've been checking out to our patrons is a wearable word counter called a Starling that counts the words that parents engage with their children, their, their young babies. And it doesn't record anything, it just counts the words. But it helps them set reading and speech goals with their children. So like, we, we, you know, we, we said 1,000 words today, we read 1,000 words, let's try to go higher than that. And even at that young age, early literacy is important to children. Just what they hear, it stimulates their brains. And we help parents, help set their child up for success with that. I mentioned Experience Passes. You can go to any of these institutions for free if you have a library card. We have passes that you can check out for Zoo Atlanta, the Michael Carlos Museum at Emory University, the Center of Puppetry Arts in Atlanta, any Georgia State Park and historic site. And some of our most recent ones include passes for the Chattahoochee Nature Center, museums in Macon, and the Berman Holocaust Museum. And we also have a pass for the Go Fish Center that's down in Perry. And so this has been a, a real money saver for families, especially this summer, where families are looking for places to go and you save just all this money by using the library. We also have non-traditional library items available for checkout, including technology, a digital microscope. We have robots that you can check out and take home. And we also have old-school stuff like spirographs and math flashcards and just everything that helps our families explore, learn, and create outside of books. If, if you don't, if, even if you don't like to read, if you have a child who doesn't like to read, that's no longer a barrier. There's something to help stimulate your mind and engage you at the library. We also have programming that we do with our technology. We have 3D printers at each of our libraries where you can have something printed and take home to keep. We have B-bots at each of our libraries that little children can use to help with coding experience. And we also have sewing machines. You can check out a sewing machine from the library and take it home. A lot of people don't know that. So if you're looking to learn. We also, some of our programming that we do, again, we have our storytimes, technology programs. Even just, you know, sometimes you just want to come and have fun. We do tons of holiday programming. We have Santa Come By. We have reading dogs up there in the middle where children who don't have as much confidence reading can read to a furry, nonjudgmental listener who, you know, won't point out if they mess up. It really helps with their confidence. There's a bunch of cool stuff that we do. Virtual reality programs, coding classes, robot, and other robotics and that people use to create. And this is my last slide. I'm going to wrap it up. Our summer reading program, so libraries are in even when school is out, y'all. It's, we have done so much for families this summer, so that's some small photos. But we've had magic shows and animal visits. And we've had a visit from Zoo Atlanta. They brought some of their animals for everyone to see. And it's been a whole ton of fun. And I know, once again, I know that our staff is is grateful for the opportunity for you to see some of what they've done. And I'm going to wrap it up. Obviously, you want to know what all we do because how could you not after seeing all that? And so you can follow us on our website, on our social media channels up there. We're on Facebook, Twitter. And if you want to ask any questions to me or our, I should mention, our executive director, Ms. Anita Summers, is here tonight with me. We're open for questions and our contact information is up there should anyone want to get in touch with us. And again, I want to thank everyone for allowing us to come and speak and give us an outlet for showing off what we do. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, John. It's a very good presentation there. Does anyone have any questions? You, you want?
I just wanted, I just wanted to say something really quick. I just wanted to really thank you all for your support, y'all being so supportive all through the years. And I know that it's a little complex situation right now with the service delivery strategy, and we do understand that. But we know, we're very excited to continue to have you all as a funding agency. And I also wanted to thank Sylvia and thank Sylvia Teasley, who is our, the Canton, City of Canton representative to the library board. And she, I just wanted to tell you all what a great job she does. And and we're so thankful that, for you appointing her to our board. And she's serving as secretary and also representative to the regional board. So.
Wow, great.
We're very happy to have her. And I just want to thank you again for this opportunity to.
Well, thank you so much. And and I can assure you, this council appreciates what the library does for our community. It, it means a lot. It wouldn't be a community without a library, you know. You've got to have that, you know, first things.
And let us know if you have any questions.
Anyone have any questions?
Just a comment is, you know, so I really commend you guys for, you know, as the barriers that you were talking about, Mr. Rogers, is the, with the, you know, just the technology and everything changing. So it's so great to see all the things you and the team are doing. Yeah, I know personally, my, my little ones, who are nine and six, love the summer reading series, you know, especially they get, they get the chance to go to all those. And so just great, great program. And so thank you for that. And then reiterate what the mayor says too, you know, and then what Bill said too. I think we definitely, once we get through the service delivery strategy stuff, I think we need to align so that it's clearly stated that we're here to support you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, I was glad to hear John explain what the reading dogs were. I thought, I thought y'all had dogs over there. And I was, thank you, John. Good presentation.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. Thank you all for being here too. Okay. Chief Mitchell, employee recognitions.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I was going to do, I was going to go flip it around, do the crime report now, and then I'll do the recognitions. If that's okay.
Sure.
Do the crime report now, and then I'll do the recognition sec- after, after the crime report. If you had the crime report before you, we had, our officers responded in the, in June 19 to over 2,100 calls. You, you see the arrests there of 91. We had a total of 479 traffic contacts during the month. Area of, areas of concern, we had, our shoplifting is a, is a reoccurring. We had seven this month, which was down from last month. Entering auto, on the first page there, the bulk of the cases. I think all of the cases actually were from the entering autos from Great Sky and River Green that we investigated. And our officers actually caught, caught the, apprehended the individuals in, in the act. So and we have cleared all of those and arrested six individuals in connection with that, with those crimes. Second page is kind of our strategies in reference to accidents. Our accidents from reading from the report were down, down this month. And it shows in our, our come, our, our UCR stats that I'm going to read here in a second, reference to our accidents. But our officers from our, from our special operations division have been conducting the, our strategies to focus on accidents and their causes. Upcoming community events, we have Coffee with the Cop this Saturday downtown at 9:00 a.m. We have our Facebook Live event next Monday, the 29th. And then our traffic stop with the cop series, which would be with our teen, teen drivers, what to do during a traffic stop and also how to, what to do during, if they're involved in an accident, young teen drivers. So that's going to be next Tuesday for, I think, around 25 slots that we have. And I think we're filling it up pretty quick, so that's next week. High-profile cases, we had both subs- suspects arrested in the Canton Ice House investigation. And again, like I said a minute ago, six males, or six individual sus-, six suspects arrested during, from the, the entering autos, Great Sky and River Green. Any questions over that report?
Mitch Grant.
Yes, sir.
One, one question, I'm just curious on the shoplifting. I know we always have a lot of cases at Walmart. Do they have private security? And if so, how? No?
They don't. They don't have private security. We've worked with their, their loss prevention. And I think our work with the loss prevention and then their work with some of the strategies that we've asked them to deploy in, in the store have helped lessen our shopliftings, our response to shopliftings during the course from last year to this year. So it's been a significant drop. So seven cases is, is actually pretty low from what we were responding to. But again, we have a really good partnership with their loss prevention and with our staff. So the work there has definitely lessened, lessened that amount.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. As far as our uniform crime report for the month, if you've seen that, just talking, looking at thefts overall in the city, we're down for the month 27%. Our shoplifting actually down for the month 66% and 58% for the year. Total property crimes right now are year to month, 35, down 35%, and then 20, close to 30% for the year. And then our total park run crimes, which involves everything, is down 27.9% and a little over 20% for the year as far as what we respond to each month and then what's reported to the Federal Bureau of Investigations. Any questions on that report?
Anyone?
Okay. Flip around the other side.
Thank you. Thank you, chief. Appreciate it very much. Good job.
I have a lot of employees here this month. Since the first of the year, we've, and again, it's always a really, a really good thing for the achievements and the recognitions of our employees. Our employees work hard during training. And our philosophy is, is a well-trained officer, professional officer that serves our city. So I think for year to, year to month, we're over around 5,500 hours of training for our officers. And that's going to be a continued focus. We always want to introduce new employees, new officers. These three that I'm about to call up just graduated from the Cherokee, or excuse me, Pickens Jipstick Academy. And we want to introduce them to, to mayor, council, and our community. Officer Michael Kaplan. Officer Carlos Hinoi, Hina? You know I am there? Officer Haley Wagner. Please step forward. These three officers, Kaplan, Hina, is actually how you just pronounce his name. I messed that up. I even asked him beforehand, but. And Officer Haley Wagner did very well in our academy. And when they went through our background and our hiring process, the reason they are here today and the reason they did well at the academy is because they're a great fit. They're a great fit for the department and they are a great fit for our community that we serve. And that's the big focus on our philosophy is that how are they going to be a fit? Are they going to fit in with the department? Are they going to fit in with, with our community? And they have shown through this whole process, and they're in field training right now. They have that, as we always say, the attitude and the mindset and the heart to what it takes to be a Canton police officer. And they're going to be very successful here in this department. So welcome. And again, mayor and council, there's our, in the community, there's Officer Kaplan, Hina, and Officer Wagner. So welcome. So, welcome. Okay, we have, uh, actually two officers this month for, uh, for employee of the quarter, so if I can have Officer Aaron Leonard and Officer Michael Shaw step forward, please. Our supervisor and our staff, um, this past, this month, or several, several weeks ago, um, we voted on who, uh, who staff and, and our supervisors and command staff thought were, were the employees of the quarter for the months of April, May, and June. And two names came to mind. Officer Aaron Leonard and Officer Michael Shaw. Both of these officers consistently, um, present, um, high professionalism, and they perform at a high level, always eager to help others and do an excellent job of being ambassadors for the department, for the community that we serve. For this, they get a, they get an award, and on the award it says, "Thank you for your hard work, your attitude of service, your mindset of community, and heart of protect for the top, department and community ser, we serve." So, um, congratulations to Officer Aaron Leonard and Officer Michael Shaw. Got, got a couple more here, and then we'll be finished. Um, if I can have Sergeant Jose Soto, Sergeant Tiffany Cromer, and crime analyst Alec Robles. Robles, step, step forward, please. These three, uh, these three employees have just recently obtained some law enforcement certifications, which are definitely, um, definitely important to their profession, their individual careers, and definitely, uh, important for, uh, the high service that we have and that we expect here at the Canton Police Department to our community. Sergeant Soto, uh, here on the left, he just completed and obtained his Georgia Peace Officers' Management Certification. Uh, this is one, one level above the supervisor certification. It's 120 hours of training, um, pretty intense training with the state, and, um, it allows him to obtain the credentials needed, potentially for future positions within, leadership positions within the agency. So what we wanna do is just recognize him for this achievement and tell him, uh, congratulations. Sergeant Tiffany Cromer, um, she just completed and obtained her supervisor certification. Again, this is 120 hours of training through the state of Georgia, and it allows her also, um, as she moves through, has obtained this, I'm sure she's got her, got her sights set on the management certification at some point in the future, will definitely help her, uh, in future leadership positions within the organization, and, um, her professionalism with, uh, again, with the department and with the community. Uh, one other, little tidbit, Sergeant Cromer recently obtained all requirements to obtain her associate degree from Georgia College, um, thought it was important to, uh, to recognize that as well, because we certainly, um, believe in furthering education, especially, uh, through college and through, through training. So congratulations to, to Sergeant Cromer. Alec Robles, our crime analyst, uh, there in the middle. Uh, we, uh, actually created this position last year because we knew the benefits, uh, of what a crime analyst can, can have for a police department and also a city, not just a police department, but, um, the analysis and the data that the crime analyst looks at, looks, uh, looks at each year, uh, each month, and the reports that he can generate for us, and the strategies that we can deploy from those reports. He has just obtained his crime and intelligence analyst certification. Uh, this is a very intense course through, actually, the university, or California University in, uh, in, well, it's in California, that's why I said California University, but, uh, through the Alpha Group. And, um, this is, uh, it's, not every crime analyst has this certification, so this is something that he really worked hard on, um, was really diligent, it was 100, over 160 hours of training and, uh, in research methods, crime al, crime, crime analysis applications, criminal intelligence and crime, uh, criminal investigative analysis. And I can tell you this, um, the, some of the cases that we've had over this past year and since the inception of the crime analyst position at our department, um, his work has definitely paid off, has linked, um, actors of crimes in our area to, um, to crimes in other areas, and that's exactly what they do, the intelligence, the network, and the communication. So, um, congratulations, um, all three of these, uh, these very important employees for obtaining your certifications. So, thank you.
Certainly see why we have a, an extremely good police department. And to the new recruits, I would say certainly welcome, welcome to the city, welcome to, uh, working with a great team here. And, uh, we are honored as council to, to have you on board, and we hope that you're honored to be able to work with a chief like Chief Mitchell and the entire staff of our police department. They're extremely good. Thank you. All right. Okay, the next item is the minutes, draft minutes you have in your agenda package for the special call meeting on July the 11th, as well as the council meeting, uh, draft minutes, uh, regular council meeting on July 11th as well. Are there any changes or corrections to be made to those?
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Grant made a motion to approve those, both sets of those minutes as presented. Uh, Mr. Yon seconded those, uh, that motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion, thank you. Our 10-minute public input period, we have, uh, one individual, I'm not sure what I did, oh, I've, I've got the, Lisa, I'm not gonna pronounce your last name, I'm gonna let you do that.
Lisa Ciatoli.
Ciatoli?
Ciatoli.
Okay.
Yes.
Welcome.
Good evening. I am Lisa Ciatoli with Acasa Senior Care. Uh, Acasa Senior Care is a compassion sitter as well, oh, sorry, a compassion sitter as well as a, um, personal care sitter. I also volunteer with the Volunteer Aging Council, and that's really why I'm here today. I wanted to invite you all to, um, our largest fundraising that we do for the Volunteer Aging Council, the VAC. The VAC's vis, vision is to ensure safety, security, and shelter for our low-income seniors as well as, um, uh, seniors that are veterans that are older. Uh, we, on September 16th, we will be having our fundraiser at the golf course in, um, Bradshaw Farm, and I will be back next month to remind you all to come, and you've got a brochure in front of you that, uh, helps with opportunities and sponsoring, or go on our webpage and do any donating. That's all I wanted to say.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. It's a great organization there.
It is.
Volunteer Agent Council has done, uh, does a great job in this community, I can tell you. Anyone?
Back in August.
Anyone? Anyone have any questions or anything? Okay, well, thank you so much.
Uh-huh, thank you.
All right. Under Old Business, the discussion of possible action on the Building and Safety Services Budget Amendment to Purchase Vehicle, there's something I think we've talked about for at least two, maybe three or four meetings. So, is there any other questions, Nathan? Our CFO is here to answer them, if there are.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Crew made the motion, Mr. Estes seconded that motion. Is there any other questions or comments? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No? All members voting for the motion, thank you. Item B, discussion of possible action of the slope easement and agreement with the Legends of Laurel Canyon. Bethany?
Hey, so, um, this item is, we talked two weeks ago about Legends at Laurel Canyon is built about 16 walls, and two of those walls are gonna affect the property located at 70 Laurel Canyon Village Circle. And, um, so this easement and agreement would allow them to maintain and construct the walls? Does anybody have any more questions?
Is this a permanent easement?
Yes, it will be a permanent easement for them to be able to maintain the wall, so that if, if there were any issues with the wall, they would be able to come on to the city property to maintain, and, um, and they may have, like landscaping up at the top of the wall to be able to, um, cut the shrubs back, or...
So what, uh, does the city get anything out of that? I mean, you know, a lot of times, a lot of times, you know, when someone wants an easement, it's, uh, they have to pay for it.
Yes.
I mean, it's, if it's a permanent easement, normally from an appraisal standpoint, it's about, you know, maybe 70% of fee simple value.
Yeah.
If it's a temporary construction easement, it's in the neighborhood of 20, 25%. From, you know, my experience anyway. But I just wondered, so, we're just, so they're not having to pay for it?
Not currently. I mean, it's definitely something that we can talk to them about, if that's something that you would like to do.
How big the area is it, that we know in square feet?
Point 033 acres.
How much?
Point 033 acres, approximately 10 feet into the...
That's not much, is it? No.
It's pretty small.
Is that, is that 120 square feet or 1,200 square feet? Anyway, never mind. Anybody have any other questions?
Maybe, I think it's a little bit more than 120. Physical access, I mean, there's no construction within the easement area.
Yeah.
It's just to walk on it to be able to maintain the wall.
I got it.
And during construction. It's temporary for the construction, but then permanent for being able to main...
Maintain.
Just basically access our property.
Okay. Any other questions?
1,300 square feet.
Okay.
Sounds like a whole lot more with...
Yeah. I didn't have enough zeros out there. Do I have a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve.
Have a second.
Second.
Mr. Estes made the motion, Mr. Yon seconded the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion, thank you. Item C, discussion of possible action of fee waiver application submitted by Meritage Homes, uh, for a lot, 2511 501 Appalachian Place to Provide Home for Military Veteran and Family. This is part of the Operation Home Front. Uh, I know we had a presentation, uh, last, uh, meeting, I guess, uh, and, and some questions. I think Ken explained what it was. Anybody have any, anybody need further explanation on that? The, if, if, if we were to, uh, waive the fees, with the exception of impact fees, you'd be talking a neighborhood of $5,500 roughly.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Grant made the motion, Mr. Yon seconded the motion. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion, thank you. All right. Item D, discussion of possible action of master sign plan, Phase 1 for the Mill on Etowah, located at 141... Okay.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members, uh, we did discuss this, uh, at, uh, last city council meeting, uh, this is a Phase 1 for the master sign plan that includes the Canton Mill Reformation Brewery, uh, and they are basically proposing six types of signs and, uh, basically requesting approval for, uh, one square feet, uh, per lineal foot of frontage along the Canton Mill. Uh, they do have a limit in regards to each of the tenants and how much square footage they would be allowed for each of, uh, the sign types. They have, uh, proposed specific locations for the sign types. I'm here to answer any questions.
Does this seem reasonable to you?
Yes, sir.
Uh, anyone else have a comment or question about that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Grant made the motion to approve, Mr. Estes seconded the motion. Any other questions, comments? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Couple of items tonight. One I wanted to bring, uh, bring before council in the form of a report, uh, as you, and I believe it's being passed around right now, as you're aware, back in October of last year, the, uh, the city started a restaurant district downtown, and the ordinance that was approved basically created a sunset for that district as of October 1 of this coming year. And when the, um, when the ordinance was approved, Ms. Wilson had asked for some data points, uh, and knowing that we've got, uh, basically August and September before that, that, uh, that sunset in October, I wanted to go ahead and give you what we had on those particular data. So one of the, one of the data points we requested was to provide information on the number of warrants and arrests, um, within the restaurant district and its hours, and so what, uh, our crime analyst, Mr. Robles, did is basically pulled the report of any arrest that occurred within that district. Uh, you'll note that, um, between last October, and I believe, uh, the date he gave me in here was, uh, the, uh, 23rd of, uh, July, uh, we had seven arrests within the district. Of those seven arrests, two of those arrests occurred during the hours that the entertainment district had been in effect, and so those are noted on here with, with asterisks. Um, so, of those two, one of them was a warrant arrest where, a warrant, where, uh, an individual had an outstanding warrant. Uh, our police officer had, uh, stopped somebody who was smoking on the sidewalk and was getting ready to issue them a warning, and when they ran the person's license, they saw they had an outstanding warrant for... The other one was a, was a public drunkenness, uh, but that particular arrest, there was no open container associated with it. During the same timeframe for the prior year, we had 14 arrests within that district. So, we had half as many arrests during the same timeframe, but only two of those arrests occurred during the hours that we did the entertainment district. I hope that answers your question on that data point, Ms. Wilson. Um, there was a question if there was any additional cost for police manpower related to the district. The chief, uh, chief stated that there were no additional costs, we didn't have to provide anybody else downtown during that time. Uh, I reached out to Mr. Hooper at Public Works, there were no additional costs for any cleanup within the district during that time. Um, there was some question about economic development within the district. Uh, in that district, we had 20 new business licenses that had been issued since last October. We had 12 licenses that were non-renewed. Uh, some of those are where you have a cosmetologist that moved in and took somebody else's seat in the salon, so there's a little bit of crossover there. Uh, most of them were associated with either somebody purchasing a building and redeveloping it into something else, and maybe a change of businesses in that particular area. And then there was a question about community development and the number of permits that were issued, so I've listed down there, there were 51 permits issued during that time of this report. Most of those are on similar projects, so you'll pull multiple permits on the building if you're doing a major project in a building. Uh, that said, you know, staff really would say, you know, we don't really see any positive or negative data points necessarily on the district. Um, what we do get lots of questions about are when is the district in effect, and how does it work, and so it is very confusing to folks. Most jurisdictions, their districts are every day. Um, ours are limited to Fridays and Saturdays. Uh, the Fridays and Saturdays that we've had since October 1, about a quarter of those have also been special event days, and when we have a special event downtown, there may be different alcohol relations to those events. So ultimately, from our standpoint, you know, I would just suggest, I don't really see a reason to reinstate it after October 1 in its form if you're using it as an economic development tool, or if you're using it as a tool to bring people downtown. I don't think it's really done that. I think if you do want to bring people downtown, the district, the way it's written, is more confusing for them, and probably more confusing for the business as well. But I wanted to get those data points to you, so you would, you know where we're at at a staff level, so that you can ultimately decide what you'd like to do with October 1 rolling around and having two months, you know, between now and then. Second thing I wanted to mention to you, uh, and, and that, a date for mediation with the county on service delivery has been set. Uh, that will occur on Tuesday, August the 6th, at 8:30 AM, uh, up at the County Administrative Building up in the Bluffs. Um, so the logistics of that mediation, um, the parties to the mediation are required to have a quorum present. We'll basically, uh, have to issue an agenda, uh, and have an open meeting. All of the parties will open their meeting at mediation. Um, some of mediation might occur in executive session as it's, as it's part of litigation, so that'll all be determined while we're there, but we will start mediation at 8:30 at the Bluffs on Tuesday, August the 6th. At our last meeting, if you recall, council approved an intergovernmental agreement, uh, for the Downtown Development Authority to seek proposals on the Jones Building. Uh, the Downtown Development Authority met last Fri- to seek proposals on the Jones Building. Uh, the Downtown Development Authority met last Friday and ratified that intergovernmental agreement. They also issued a request for proposals that went out on Tuesday of this week. Uh, it's on our website. We've pushed it out onto a couple of different sites across the state. We've sent it out to people who have contacted us with interest, and we'll be doing some other, um, push on it. The way the RFP is written, proposals are due by August the twenty-eighth. Uh, so we've got over a month for proposals, but we are having a mandatory pre-submitting meeting. Uh, we figured it was easier to, to have a time and date that people could come in and ask us specific questions about the building and also tour the building at the same time. And so that's going to be on August the seventh. And then finally, I would just mention that, uh, information went out today about a town hall meeting and, uh, there'll be a town hall meeting in Ward One on, uh, August the twentieth, which is a Tuesday. It'll be at six o'clock and it'll be held at Chattahoochee Technical College's Canton Campus up in the Bluffs. The format is basically short presentations on specific topics around development. We'll talk about State Route one forty corridor, public safety, uh, and also have some time for question and answer from the public. Even though it's being held in Ward One and some of the topics will be specific to Ward One, it's open to everybody. And I'm sure anybody that wants to attend will be more than welcome there. Um, and that's really all I have unless you have any questions for me.
Mr. Estes?
Just, if you could, maybe we spend a few more minutes talking about the restaurant district.
Sure.
So, um, so I think, you know, I guess, for the record, I guess, you know, I was the one that was very supportive of it, at times apparently unethically, but, uh, of course, would never prove to be anything because we don't have an ethics code that we can really live by. But I would say, sorry, I'm being snarky a little bit there. Um, what I would say, though, is, you know, it's good to see the data points. Um, you know, that we did limit it to, you know, certain days, which, as you said, is very confusing. It does not incent the restaurants and shops and whatnot to, to, um, you know, just understand it really, you know, as I've talked to, to restaurants, uh, in, in the district. You know, the, the joke is, you know, you need your social security number, your blood type, you know, then it's, it's, it's a joke, of course, but it is very confusing. It's also confusing to visitors. I think the other point that I would make is that, you know, one of the, the intents here was not to be the solve all, but now if we have drinking in the streets, then all of a sudden, all the restaurants and businesses come, but it does start to create, um, and again, at the best practice of other communities like Roswell and, uh, Alpharetta and Woodstock and even Acworth, and now Ball Ground is, is doing it, that, you know, it, it does send a message that, hey, you know, this is an open, outdoor community. I think that combined with a lot of the other stuff that we're doing with the mill development project, which this doesn't even enter into, they're outside of the restaurant district. Really does, um, really does, you know, continue to support this, this economic environment that says, we are open. You know, so I, I do support your point about, you know, what do we do for, uh, making it less confusing. I think good points, uh, just to reiterate, like you said, you know, we did see that, um, you know, there really were not any increase in arrests, um, but we did, you know, we, and we even picked the most popular days, so I think that's telling. Um, so the concerns of, you know, if you open it up on every day, one could argue, you know, volume would be lower. So, um, so we don't, um, we, we shouldn't have an issue there. Again, you also reiterated, uh, you, you made the point that it already operates on many special events, which draw huge crowds. And, and as I think we've talked in the past, we typically haven't seen, you know, issues from the police during those events either. You know, I think we do, you know, the one positive thing about this, um, was that we really, we, unlike most council meetings where we have, you know, a limited amount of folks that do attend on person, in person, we do have the ability to watch it online, but, you know, again, in person is, is great, um, to hear direct feedback. And we got so many people that came out, um, for it and against it. It was really a, a great opportunity, at least in my short tenure, to see, uh, people giving feedback directly for and against. You know, I think there was a lot of, uh, concern. You know, ultimately, my, my concerns expressed for, you know, just concern in general, as well as for the district, would be to, from the restaurants, would be to revisit it and, uh, and, and see if there are opportunities, um, to simplify it and streamline it. Uh, again, using other communities as best practices, which I, I think we did. I think if I recall, we kind of got alignment. We were, were pretty well aligned. We even had compromises, which was, which was good, always good when the council can compromise. Unfortunately, one of the members who forced a lot of compromises ended up voting against it. So, you know, we'll, we'll certainly, you know, I, I think, see if that's still the case here. And again, I think it's a great opportunity, um, to, you know, especially in an election year like this, to really get, get it back on the docket and, and see what the community really wants, you know? We continue to get so many people that only vote, but don't attend the meetings and hope that we are their advocates for representing the community. And, uh, and so I'd love to see this come back on the table, um, for, for more discussion here potentially, um, unless there's other thoughts or feedback from the council on how we would want to proceed further.
Okay. Anyone else?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Cindy. You go ahead.
I wanted to, um, have you clarify, did I hear correctly, that the two arrests that were made during the restaurant district hours and days, there was not an open container involved in those two arrests?
That's correct. The, the one that was a warrant arrest was, so one of the, well, so one of the confusions also about this is that if you're, if you're on the sidewalk, but you're within the patio dining of one of the restaurants, it's not technically part of the restaurant district. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So our restaurants downtown almost all have patio dining, and so they go through a permit process to be able to have tables outside the restaurant. You can drink in that area where the table is outside the restaurant. So the one where there was a warrant arrest was in one of those areas. I can't say that it wasn't an open container because they're in a patio area. Does that make sense?
It was in the designated dining patio area?
Correct, correct.
So that's permitted every day?
Correct. Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Wilson?
I, I wanted to thank you for these, uh, for these numbers. I was going to ask you about that because I had it on my calendar, and this is just what we needed to know. I think anytime we have something brand new, we have to have a learning curve, and this has helped the learning curve. So thank you for these numbers. I want to say one other thing. You brought, um, brought, announced the town hall meeting, but you were looking at us. So I want to look at everybody in the audience and, and tell you that every one of you, you don't have to live in Ward One, please come to Chattahoochee Tech on August the twentieth at six o'clock for the town hall meeting. Ms. McGrew and I will be your host. We're the Ward One, uh, representatives, but we want everyone to come and hear about what's going on in the city and maybe we can answer some questions that you have. We had one about three years ago, two or three years ago, and it was successful. So we want to have a lot of folks come, so I'm looking at all of you. Tell all your friends. We want to have a good crowd to come. Thanks.
And I might add that it would even be good to have our county neighbors from, uh, one forty north to come and join us because one forty affects them greatly.
We, we won't use the MI in the City app on people when they come in, like, like we do on, like we do on dumpster day. We won't do that.
And could, uh, may I ask you, with Ms. Wilson's permission, to issue an invitation to our county representative, Steve West?
Sure. I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Great, great. Anyone else? Let me, let me ask a question. I probably should have asked this, uh, earlier when the chief, make sure I understand this chart here. Am I reading the DUI arrests correctly, that they're up sixty-seven percent over this, the same period of time last year? So, so DUI arrests are up almost seventy percent over last year. I saw one to know. Okay. What we might want to do is make this district countywide, since they go down if it's in the, in the district and they go up outside the district. So we may want to look at that. Uh, just kidding.
Excuse me. Were those DUIs, uh, occurring inside the restaurant district or were they dispersed throughout the city?
This is throughout the city, throughout the city.
So that would maybe have included Ice House or Longhorn?
It would have included, it would have included. Well, it, it may have included something in Jasper or other counties.
Okay.
You don't know. I mean, they, they may not know where they, uh, consumed it from.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Grant?
And one other thing, I mean, on that, I, I recall last month that DUIs being like a hundred and fifty percent or something like that. And so, I mean, this goes by the month by the average, so it's, you could say it's actually down this month. If I recall that correctly, it was like, much higher like last month.
Now, this month it's doubled, basically, from last month.
I recall looking at that like last month, but I guess my point there, like, no, that's a, last, last year, year to month, it was a hundred and sixty-seven percent. This year, year to day, sixty-seven.
Sixty-six point.
It fluctuates by months like, like all of these, but, um, certainly it's something we should pay attention to and look at, you know,
Sure.
at the end of the year, so, but, uh, but that is, I guess, it is city, these are city numbers, correct?
Yes.
Across the city.
Ms. McGrew?
May I ask chief a question, please?
Of course.
He's down there somewhere. Uh, just out of my curiosity, Chief Mitchell, you don't have to come up. And if you don't know this off the top of your head, that's fine. It's, I'm just a little curious. Do you find that DUIs are up a bit in the, uh, warm months as opposed to the winter months?
Hmm.
It'll all be relative.
You would think so.
Good question. Um, just looking at data, um, it, it appears that it would maybe up during, during the warmer,
but, uh, I couldn't specifically say that that's scientifically a, a good answer. But, uh, no, just, I couldn't say that was for, for certain that that's, that's the case because.
That's curious. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else?
Chief, have your tactics changed as it relates to pursuing DUIs?
I think what you'll find, and Mr. Peppers and I had this question, uh, you, you probably have an average, um, officer experience in our department. We have a young, young workforce, if that makes sense. And when I go to the academy and I come out of the academy, I got to get that experience. And once I get that experience through the year, and then once I get my confidence, then you'll see, um, uh, how proactive, you know, how proactive our officers are going to be once they get that confidence, once they get through their field training, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
So a, a lot of our workforce, a lot of officers out here now at night, um, have gotten that experience over the years, over the, over the time, over the, the last one to two years, and they get that confidence. And then they make, they, uh, begin, um, their, their proactive activities, if that makes, if it makes sense. And then we've, um, had a pretty good strategy during our monthly meetings about focusing on DUIs, about from our accidents and things, from what we've been seeing. So, uh, we try to put our, the, through the director, director patrols, put them in areas where they'll be able to be successful, be able to detect, um, something like that occurring.
Yeah. No, I think, you know, I was a little, maybe more aware, right? Because I got my alleged DUI in May, and so I was, you know, seeing that as a one-period trend, but then I saw, um, June was up as well. And so, again, I think to help support your question a little bit or maybe answer it, I would, the concern I'm seeing is more of the year-over-year trend, so it goes up. But is it going up because of the, um, changes in any tactics or anything trained?
I would just say that the, the more the proactive mindset that, that our officers have, um, getting, getting, getting out here and, and being able to detect these things, um, during, during this time, the timeframes, which a lot of times is during your evening and your, your morning hours.
And I would, I would mention one other thing, too, that you have to remember in general about the police department is that if we go through a period of time in the police department where we're operating with three, four, five, six vacancies, I mean, one year we had nine vacancies.
Yes.
Last year was probably, of the years I've been here, last year would be the year I pointed to, I would point to and say that's when we've had the fewest vacancies at any time.
Was last year and this year?
The more officers that you have on patrol,
Right.
the more likely you are to, to have an increase in all types of traffic, type citations, because you've got more eyes on the road at any given time. And so, you know, that's, that's, that may be something that we're seeing in there as well.
The, the counter might work, too, as far as how many do we have stationed downtown during those events? Do we have several police officers there? If we don't, then, you know, the numbers might be low because of that. That's what you're saying, basically, is that the more officers you got on the road, the more likely arrests you probably will have. And that makes perfect good sense. So in the area where you got less officers, you might make less.
I would just say in general, we cover downtown like we cover the rest of our commercial areas. So it should be covered in the same manner, um, from the general.
Should be.
I note on our, on our daily activity reports, especially with our night teams, is the foot patrols downtown. They, they do foot patrols downtown. We'll put a bike through downtown. Um, but we, we, if you, if you probably looked at the, a chart of all the DUIs around the city, they're equally spread out throughout the city, so.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Grant?
Just like a make-up observation, I think increased DUIs is actually a good thing because it's making our streets safer. So I'd like to thank you for that, so.
Yes.
I was, I was just going to add one other thing. Uh, you also have to remember that, you know, as, as you mentioned earlier, that DUI might not actually have started in the city. It might have started somewhere else. You know, one of our neighbors to the south doesn't have the ability to enforce certain traffic, uh, on the interstate. And so because of that, you know, we, we do get some things on the interstate that
We do.
maybe didn't come from our area. And that may be a lead to some of those factors as well. Because as we have increased staffing, we have focused on the interstate because, you know, it does run through the heart of the city, and a lot of our crime that does occur comes right off the interstate. You know, I, I tell people all the time, and I'm not, I'm not joking about it, but chief will tell me about a, a crime that's occurred in the city, and a majority of the time I'll say that they come from Pickens County, and they either came from Pickens County or from Metro Atlanta. The crime that we have occurring isn't always our residents, and, and so, you know, that's something that, that I think we, we see a good bit in now that we're fully staffed in the police department, is our ability to handle that better.
Right.
Anyone else have a question for the chief? Comments? You're doing a good job. We appreciate it.
I'm trying, sorry.
I can't say that enough. You know that.
Thank you, thank you.
Doing a good job. All right. Mayor's report, uh, as I.
Are we still in the, the city manager's section? I had a question.
That's sure.
For, uh, for Billy. I guess my concern that I have right now is, um, it appears that we've got a, what would be a gap in our process for open records requests. The incident that occurred this week and possibly last week, um, and maybe it's because the chief doesn't, you know, you said he's doing a great job, but apparently his investigative skills are probably not up to snuff because, uh, this week, uh, the mayor was insistent that, uh, multiple people go and view the video of my DUI, um, arrest in, in May. And so, um, so the, the issue I had was, um, should we be allowing city council members to, to view them without open records requests? And again, I just am trying to figure out the, the insistency of the mayor to insist that council members like Ms. Ms. Wilson and, and Mr. Goodwin, that they just must go see it. Um, and, and again, we've had an open conversation about it. I still don't understand it, but I, I just give background for, for members of the community to say, um, I don't know if it falls in the scope of abuse of power. It's a big word. Um, or if, um, you know, again, it just sounds like maybe there's a flaw in the, in the, uh, policy that we probably need to address. Because my understanding was, um, other.
we probably need to address, because my understanding was other members of the community would not be able to view videos, and so that becomes a pretty big concern for me. So the ask would be, maybe we need to look at our policy for open records requests. Thank you.
You through? Is that all? Thank you.
Yeah, for now.
All right. Okay. Next item, mayor's report. I had mentioned at the last meeting, we'd nominate Mr. Bill Teasley, who was here earlier tonight, as a matter of fact, and Mr. Neil McGruder for position on the Historic Preservation Commission. They both have a history of service and interest in historic preservation in our city, almost beyond most, most people certainly, but beyond almost anyone, and they're both extremely good citizens, and as you notice, Ms. Teasley is, was officer on the library board as too, so I would make that nomination, and I would just ask that the council approve those two.
Second motion.
Second motion.
Okay, well, second, actually, I made the nomination, Mr. Goodwin, I guess, seconded that. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Are they, real quick question, are they, they both are willing to serve?
Yes. Talk to both of them.
Good.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no. All members voting for the motion. Thank you. Also want to remind everyone of the upcoming city election on November the 5th. You know, we want to keep reminding voters to keep that in mind because we need as much participation as possible, and qualifying will begin on August 19 and run through, I think, noon on the 21st. $360 for council member slots and $540 for the mayoral, mayor slot, and so if you've ever had that burning desire to be on the council and contribute to your community in that way, it's your chance to get involved, so. Just want to remind everyone, and I think, I think we have to keep doing it. Most people don't get interested in elections, voters, until about two weeks before the election, but I think as long as they know they're coming up, I think we can hopefully encourage participation there. The other item is that there will be, I believe Mr. Peppers is putting together an ethics training session, which will be probably at least four hours for the council members, and I think this is a good thing, something that we need to do. There's a lot of confusion about ethics among elected officials throughout the state, in fact, and, you know, a lot of the things that you can do in private business just doesn't pass the smell test in government, and so I think it's important that we all understand what that's about and do our best to be as ethical. Everyone will make mistakes, and when you make a mistake, you just admit it, say I'm sorry, and do your best to go on, but everyone's going to make mistakes. But, you know, if you have a better knowledge about what ethics involves in government, particularly, I think it will help you avoid, help us all avoid some of those mistakes. All right. The next item, let's see for something else. Also, I would like to make a note that on August 6, at 6:00 p.m., at the Cherokee County Board of Commissioners will have a public hearing on the banning of the retail sales of puppies and kittens, so that will be coming forward, and that's something that Canton took the lead in and was the first city to pass that in the state. Now there were probably around 10 or so cities that have done the same thing, and it's a very, very, very good thing, I think, and I'm hopeful that the county will follow suit there as well. All right. That's all that I have, so I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel, litigation, and real estate.
Go move.
Second. Mr. Goodwin made the motion. Mr. Grant seconded it. We will not be coming back out for any votes or anything, so. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're out of here.